Good evening, everyone.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6 et Sec., notice of which was sent to the record and the Starlight Juror was passed and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
May I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Pataglia.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Here.
Councilmember Sims.
Here.
Councilmember Sol.
Here.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Would everyone please rise for the flag, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Toast, may we have the city managers? We have no minutes to approve, right?
No.
Okay.
Okay, some of this is going to be a repeat bit. I think it's worth repeating. The first item has to do with sanitation pickup or trash pickup or garbage pickup. The twice, the twice-a-week garbage pickup has been temporarily suspended. What we are doing, the city is, I have contracted with a certified mechanic that is certified by the state under the state contracts laws. He will be independently evaluating our fleet to look at the condition of the trucks. One of the reasons why we are not able to meet the commitment of twice a week is the condition of the trucks. He's going to do an independent evaluation on the condition of the vehicles and give me a status on each vehicle so that I can present to the council the findings and so that we can replace, repair vehicles and hopefully have a, at least a short-term and a long-term solution to meet the sanitation requirements of the city. I would, once I get this report, which should be by the end of the week, I may be requesting an emergency council meeting so that that could be specifically discussed and not wait until the August meeting so that the appropriate actions can be taken as quickly as possible. The information was sent out via email, via Nixle and via reverse 911. I understand there might have been some issues with the reverse 911. I will be checking into that. It's also on the website. So it is temporarily suspended and we will have updates for you when information is available. Item number two, building department update. There were 78 notices written, 78 inspections, 64 in compliance with the re-inspection. Two summons were issued. There were 14 sidewalk inspections and 11 CCOs, which is continuing certification of occupancy. We received a grant from New Jersey Highway and Traffic Safety Pedestrian Safety Enforcement Fund of $16,000. The Tuesday summer concert, which is tomorrow night, on the Green is Smooth, a Motown band. And on the 28th, it's the Time Machine, just to give you an update on the status. Of course, Tuesday night, I don't see any rain predicted, so the show should go on. The Atlantic Street Park was ribbon-cutting was last week. Again, there will be Shakespeare in the Park at the new Atlantic Street Park on Wednesday, July 22 at 7:30 p.m. and it's the murder of Thomas Arden of Fabercham. Also, at the Atlantic Street Park, summer movie night or nights, August 12, the sing-along movie Frozen for the kids. If you have any grandkids or kids, that seems to be a craze that sometimes drives us parents and grandparents out of our minds. But remember, the kids are today, they're not the future. August 27, the blockbuster movie, Back to the Future 2, for those people who remember those oldies but the good ones. And then the real classic movie on September 3 will be Breakfast at Tiffany's. So I hope you come and attend and enjoy the new park. Now for the open swim night, which the city has been working with the city schools and the Board of Ed. And all our documents in place, believe it or not, you'd think this would be a simple, open it up. It's not. When you get insurance companies involved, it gets very complicated. We have all our insurances in place, believe it or not, which is good, I think, is the city and the school have the same insurance carrier. So, but believe it or not, they, the school board, has to approve it. The city has approved it. The school board has to approve it. And in open session during the COW, Jason Nudamacher is going to work on that as the president of the school board to make that happen quickly. So those open swim nights will happen. And let me just go through the process. The registration and the procedures are approved. There will be, are approved. There will be four lifeguards, including one supervisor, which is the senior lifeguard. The preregistration will occur at 9 to 6 p.m. Monday through Friday, whenever the day that's going to, the Wednesday night that's going to happen. The open swim night will be on Wednesday evenings. It's going to be divided up into two sessions, one starting at 4:30 and ending at 6:00. The second session will start at 6:30 and end at 8:00. The maximum capacity around the pool is 160. There are adults, obviously, and are invited, but the children category, ages, in order to swim, you have to be seven years old to 11, you have to have an adult with you. Ages 12 to 16, adult doesn't have to be with you, but you must pass a swim test. Again, the seven to 11 years old, you have to pass a swim test, too, if you want to get out of the shallow area. The shallow area will be clearly marked. And the city will be providing that divider. What will happen is the preregistered people will go to the pool. At the allotted time, they will receive a wristband when they check in. Now, the preregistration, you have to show proof of residency in the city of Hackensack. You then will get the band after your, if you're at the 4:30 to 6, then at that point, the band will be removed and then the next session will start in a half an hour. Again, the only thing that we're waiting on and we're working with the school board and with the school board president is that the school board officially has to accept the project or the event in a formal action. So they do have to meet in order for this to move forward. And I know Jason will do all he can to make that happen. I believe that is the end of the city manager's report.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Toast. All right. I'm sorry, David has a question.
When can people start registering?
As soon as we find out that Wednesday we're going to open, then we're going to advertise. Well, I don't know if it's considered an emergency to do the reverse. It's not. So it'll be an email blast. It'll be put on the website. And we will do everything we can to get the word out. Usually, word of mouth travels quickly. So if somebody finds out, pass it on to your neighbor. So as soon as we know what night it is, then we'll start the registration. So it'll be 160 people per session. Now, I didn't say, because it's in the details, if you have a 12- to 17-year-old that is going to swim and you're the transportation, there's, you don't actually have to sign up. You can go and go on the balcony up above and view from up above. It would not be counted as one of the 160. So if you're a parent that does not intend to get in the pool and you have a child within that age from 12 to 17, you don't have to get a pass.
Well, I look forward to the opening and I thank the Board of Ed. And it's a good collaborative effort. I'm sure they're going to expedite this process. I know it may require them having a special meeting, but hopefully we can get this done. And maybe that's, you know, at that point, we'll know. Maybe if we coordinate when you have your special meeting, then we can announce what the opening date will be.
That's correct.
And then that would say preregistration is open. So that would be another way of getting the word out there as well, because it would be at their meeting. Just a suggestion, that might work well. Okay, on to order of business. First one, we have Resolution 274-15.
Okay, this is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 29-2015 and ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170, entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section 49.2, entitled Parking for the Handicap. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Okay, seeing that this is the second reading of the ordinance, may I have a motion to open it to the public?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Okay, at this time, if anyone wishes to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward to the podium and give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, may I have a motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
And Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Okay, now may I have a motion to adopt?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent. Now be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 29-2015 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
All right, Resolution 275-15.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 30-2015, which is an ordinance amending Part II of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code entitled General Legislation to add Chapter 67, entitled Body Piercing, Ear Piercing, and Permanent Cosmetics. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
As this is also the second reading of an ordinance, may I have a motion to open it to the public?
Offer. Second.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
At this time, if anyone wishes to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward and give your name and address to the clerk. Seeing none, may I have a motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
May I now have a motion to adopt?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 30-2015 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Resolution 276-15.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 31-2015 and ordinance amending Part II entitled General Legislation, Chapter 90, entitled Food and Drink, Article VII, entitled Sale of Tobacco Products.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent. Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 31-2015, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on August 3, 2015, at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. And that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where, said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Resolution 277-15.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 32-2015, a capital ordinance of the City of Hackensack and the County of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing an ordinance for the acquisition of TASER units for the Hackensack Police Department and appropriating $40,000 and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the fund balance of the General Capital Fund of the City of Hackensack.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent. Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 32-2015, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on August 3, 2015, at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. And that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where, said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Resolution 278-15.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 33-2015 and ordinance amending Part II, entitled General Legislation, Chapter 170, entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section 56, entitled Schedule 7, One Way Street.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent. Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 33-2015, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on August 3, 2015, at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the city council. And at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. And that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where, said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Resolution 279-15.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 280-15.
This is a resolution authorizing refunds for the Hackensack Recreation Department.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 281-15.
This is a resolution authorizing the renewal of liquor licenses for the year 2015 through June 30 of 2016.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 282-15.
This is a resolution authorizing raffle license for Christ Episcopal Church.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 283-15.
This is a resolution authorizing the tax collector to convert below charges to property liens.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 284-15.
This is a resolution increasing the minimum bid threshold and authorizing the qualified purchasing agent to negotiate award and signed contracts.
May I have a motion?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 285-15.
This is a resolution authorizing accrued time payout of $30,142.29 to Rosemarie Mayo.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 286-15.
This is a resolution authorizing the tax bill attorney to settle the cases on the attached list dated July 10, 2015, that were scheduled for trial or settlement.
May I have a motion?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 287-15.
This is a resolution authorizing the release of escrow for 51 J Street.
May I have a motion?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 288-15.
This is a resolution authorizing award of contract for supplement to Grand Avenue Improvement Project to DLS contracting.
May I have an offer, please? Motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 289-15.
This is a resolution to authorize settlement for the 2010 tax year for the Court Plaza Associates settlement, Block 207, lots 3, 4, and 5, that inadvertently set forth incorrect original assessments on the April 16, 2014, settled case lists attached to Resolution Number 199-14, dated May 20, 2014.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 290-15.
This is a resolution authorizing tax bill attorney to settle the cases on the attached list dated July 16, 2015, that were scheduled for trial or settlement.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 291-15. Oh, okay. Go ahead, you can speak.
I'm just going to change my vote to abstain.
On 290?
On 290-15.
Okay, so Councilmember Sol's abstain.
We good?
Yeah.
All right, moving on to 291-15.
This is a resolution authorizing the issuance of requests for qualifications for professional services to the city of Hackensack.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 292-15.
This is a resolution concurring with the planning board's investigation and designating Block 203.01, lots 2, 3, and 3.01, and Block 300, lots 3.01 and 3.02, formerly known as 150 River Street or the Record Site, as a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 293-15.
This is a resolution authorizing the planning board appointment for Albert Dibb to fulfill the unexpired term of Art Caster to expire on December 31, 2017.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Resolution 294-15.
This is a resolution authorizing award of contract for engineering services related to combined sewer permit monitoring for Arcadis US Inc.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
Okay, and finally, Resolution 295-15.
This is a resolution authorizing the payment of bills. The current fund is $2,169,782.99. Grants is $13,178. Payroll is $1,814,868.28. Capital is $63,884.90. Trust account is $82,707.71. Total expenditures is $4,144,421.88. Inter-funds and transfers is $6,360,799.90.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
May I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Sol.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus is absent.
At this time, anyone who would like to speak, please come up to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk, and you have five minutes.
Bill, I will. I just wanted to address a comment I made before regarding requesting that the city of Hackensack write a resolution to accept an ATC, a marijuana, medical marijuana distribution packet here. In other words, there's three more ATCs available. They're looking for locations. It's a very good program. It's helping a lot of people. We need to stay on top of Hackensack being a great place, a place with an open mind, moving forward, a city that's moving forward, you know? And also, stay on top of being the number one in medical, providing medical breakthroughs. We got Hackensack University Medical Center, everything all around here. And if we had an ATC and also a resolution that says we would accept a firm somewhere that would do medical research, they're going to be allowing that now soon. I mean, I guess it might be possible to have, to open that up, and it's such a wording that if it becomes federally acceptable, they pass the bill, which is, I think, going to be written soon, that if Hackensack already puts it out there, it sends a good message out to all the kids that need help, you know? A lot of kids have had to move out of New Jersey, you know, with their whole families to get the help they need. And I, having tried marijuana when I was a teenager, didn't like it because it made me a little paranoid, didn't think that it was going to keep me out of the emergency room. I saved the taxpayers a lot of money on Medicare, my insurance company, on disability because of my condition. If it kept going like it was going, you know, those emergency room visits, they're very expensive. And nothing ever helped. All the kinds of medic, they had me on morphine patches. They had me on, you wouldn't believe the kind of drugs. I was depressed all the time. I felt like I was dying. I couldn't breathe when the morphine patch set in and all these horrible feelings. I never liked drugs like that, you know? The marijuana freed me. So I'm a believer, and I just want to say that, you know, how much more, you know, can kids go through? It's really hard to get medicine. I have to go all the way down to Atlantic City to get my medicine. Everybody else does, too. Or, you know, down in mid-New Jersey. We got Hackensack. We have this great medical community. Let's add to it. Get, open up. We got Hackensack, we have this great medical community, let's add to it, get, open up our hearts and our minds, and provide the ability to have an ATC right here in northern New Jersey, and go a step further, and have an ordinance says that if it becomes legal to have a research center, we'll allow one here in our zoning, you know, laws. And that's all I wanted to say, and thank you for being a great council, big change, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Council. I am Mark Stein, Hackensack resident. I am aware that a previous city council, when taking office, asked the city manager and department heads to assess the needs of the city of Hackensack, facilities, infrastructure, and equipment. In that assessment, one of the areas in desperate need of upgrade was our sanitation fleet. Sound familiar? The department was asked to indicate what trucks needed replacement, maybe not the oldest truck, but one that needed the most amount of mechanical attention. A bonding plan was developed to replace these, at least one sanitation truck a year, over a five-to-six-year period. At the end of six years, Hackensack had a younger fleet to meet the needs of our residents and our commercial residents. And here you are today, July 2015, two years into your administration. You've heard many complaints from Hackensack residents about missed pickups, whether it be recycling, yard waste, or garbage. And all the public hears, and I quote, "We have a maintenance problem." The only monies in the past two years allocated to the sanitation fleet, other than the municipal budget, was last meeting when you allocated $90,000 to lease garbage trucks. Not one mention in the previous two years about bonding for new garbage trucks. Why? Maybe you should consider using the $100,000 you earmarked for the Leo Pataglia Memorial Soccer Dome over Johnson Park, and put it to better use upgrading our sanitation trucks. Deputy Mayor, you need to develop a long-term plan, and I was glad to hear Mr. Tros' comments tonight. Not temporary fixes. I am, and I'm sure other residents are, looking for an answer. What are your plans?
I could have our city manager go through them again in more detail, as we discussed at the COW meeting, but, I mean, pretty much in a nutshell, is we are not going to make any decisions without having all the facts. And what our first step is to obtain an outside evaluation of our entire fleet, and that's what's in process right now. Let's take a look at what we have, and let's understand exactly what we have. I mean, rather than just going out and saying, hey, let's just go buy a few new trucks, we really don't know if some of the trucks that we do have are worth saving and can be repaired and put back, which one of those, really, it's not worth us to be repaired? And that's what we're doing, we're taking step one in that process. Let's get a good outside evaluation of the entire fleet before we make any decisions. And what you're proposing here may be part of the solution, but we don't know that yet. And when we have the information, then we'll make an intelligent decision. We'll decide, okay, maybe it's worth it for us to repair truck A, B, and C, but not D, E, and F, and maybe then we need to replace truck D, E, and F. That's what we're looking at now. So we've asked to have a little patience during this two-week period where we're going to roll back the twice-a-week garbage, because we have multiple problems, not only the fact that we have problems with our trucks, but we also have some staffing issues. We've had an inordinate amount of sick time and other issues with some of our staff. As of, at the COW meeting, our city manager mentioned that we just recently hired two new men with CDL, is that the right? With CDL licenses, so that they're equipped to step up and man the trucks when we have this staffing shortage. And we're looking at hiring two additional folks, if, you know, we have money in the budget to do so, should we be able to find good, qualified people. What we've also done is we've extended to our current employees that we will help them in any way possible if they're interested in obtaining the CDL license. So those are the steps that we're taking to handle, to go forward with our staffing issues, and what we're, the steps we're taking to go forward with the trucks. And it's really, they go hand-in-hand, it's a twofold process. And I certainly appreciate your comments, we appreciate everyone's patience during this two-week period, but the decision was a tough one. The decision was, do we continue to try and do twice a week and disappoint folks and have garbage sitting out in the sun and the heat? Or do we go to once a week for a two-week period until we really understand 100% where we are, and then hopefully resume the twice a week very quickly? And that's what we hope to accomplish. And yes, I agree with you, long-term planning is key, and our CFO has talked about this many, many, many times. When we came into office, there was virtually no vehicle replacement plan for any of the vehicles, and that's unsatisfactory. Nothing was documented, maintenance plans weren't documented, replacement plans were not documented, and we've been in the process of trying to accumulate that with vehicles throughout the city, and do the right thing for the residents. So that's where we're going, and we're not going to make decisions without having the facts, so that's what we're doing first, and hopefully we'll be able to share status with you within the next couple of weeks.
Deputy Mayor, I appreciate your comments, but my real, I guess my real point was, you've been in office already two years out of the four. I'm sure that the garbage truck issue just didn't happen overnight, and I think this is something the council should have looked at two years ago, a year and a half ago, to do this assessment, and not halfway through your term.
Well, unfortunately, we've been relying on our in-house mechanics to do that assessment, and we found that that was ineffective, and that we just recently discovered. And I, it disturbs me to have to admit that to you, but that's the real truth. So that's why we are saying, we're not going, you know, we're hearing, this is okay, and this isn't okay, and if we just did this, you're gonna be okay. Well, it's proving to not be okay. So that's why we've taken this kind of radical step, and saying, we're gonna get an outside company in here who has expertise in evaluating this type of equipment, and documenting it, vehicle by vehicle by vehicle, so we make the right decision going forward. And let's be fair, last summer, we were able to accomplish the twice-a-week garbage. We were able to do that, our trucks were running, our staff was running. We were looking into trying to define a long-term replacement plan for all vehicles, yes, we started that process. And unfortunately, at this point, we've had, like I said, a lot of contributing factors, staffing, and the status of our vehicles, and the ability to diagnose those vehicles and repair those vehicles. We've recently started second shift of, with mechanics at the garage, so that hopefully we can get some of these repairs done in a more timely manner, and get some of it done and the evaluating done in-house. But until we have that full report, we're not ready to make decisions, but we will.
I agree with that.
But we will, and we will do the right thing for the residents, I promise you that.
Okay, thank you.
Regina DePasqua, Parker Avenue. Are we still picking up Maywood's garbage?
Yes, we are.
Through the end of the month, that's it.
Twice a week, they still get twice a week?
That's what the contract is.
Or we would be sued for breach of contract.
That's a disservice to the residents of Hackensack.
Regina, we approached this with Maywood, and we would be sued for breach of contract. It's two weeks.
I thought we had stopped doing theirs.
It's through the end of July.
So doing Maywoods for how many years has cost us by using our trucks, and now we don't have what we need?
Regina, Regina, we're ending it, we're terminating.
I understand, but.
We're terminating the contract.
Two years, for two years?
And we've been using their trucks, they've been, their trucks have been keeping us going as well.
Excuse me, excuse me, for two years? We've been asking you to end it. When it started, we asked it to not be done. For two years, been picking up Maywoods twice a week, using our trucks, and now we Hackensack residents don't have, sometimes don't even have it once a week, because you never know when they're going to come. That's a problem, that's a disservice to the residents.
And we're also using their trucks, Regina, for our garbage as well.
They're using, you're using our trucks.
They're using our.
We're using their trucks for ours, because we have worn ours out. And the sanitation department head, you recently discovered that the trucks were a problem? What does he say? He wasn't reporting this to anybody, and he still has a job?
It's a very good question, Regina.
I don't know how he got the job to begin with. It was never advertised, he has no experience, and we're stuck with garbage, okay? It's a big problem. I'm telling you, 50 garbage cans out in my neighborhood today? That's disgusting, because people didn't get the message, it wasn't being picked up. I'm sorry, it's unacceptable, it really is. I hope you do get it fixed. I read online that we're getting a cultural arts board, and it was stated that the city, with the help of the Main Street Business Alliance, and the mayor and Mr. Lombardo were both quoted in this article, will appoint a cultural arts board to run the center and program performances. What's our cultural arts director's job? Isn't that his job?
It would be feedback from the community, which I think is well-deserved.
But isn't that his job?
Let me answer that. It would be, it would be similar to the recreation superintendent and the recreation board.
Okay.
So it would function very similar to that.
Okay, we'll see. Because this has the Upper Main Street Alliance, the big hand in it, they don't have a hand in our recreation. Upper Main Street Alliance, they don't live here in Hackensack. Most of them do not live here in Hackensack, so I have an issue with that. But we'll see what happens. The taxes on tonight's agenda. Resolutions 28615, 289, 28615 was settlement, 28915 was a correction, 29015 was a settlement. Anybody have a total on that? What it cost us?
290 was approximately 754,000. This is all part of those old settlements, Regina, that are still being processed from the 30 million.
But we're still paying the money, so.
We have to, Regina. It's our responsibility, they've been sitting, and we're closing them out, and we'll be bonding again to do that. And what was the other number, 286?
289 was a correction, and 290.
289 was a typo, it was 370,000, it was incorrect last time. 290 is approximately 754,000, 286 is approximately 1.6 million.
Okay, thank you. We still have no resolution of the ambulance situation, and I mean, no resolution that you're gonna pay, that the city's gonna pay the residents, no resolution of the agreement.
I think Mr. Tros and Mr. Nelson briefed everyone on that a couple of meetings ago, yes, Mr. Tros?
Yes.
But there's, you said, you said, so the city's not gonna pay? Or?
I think he explained it very well, that.
We need a resolution to pay it, that's what I'm.
Do we need, require a resolution for that?
There has to be.
If the city's spending money, yeah.
There has to be an ordinance which is being worked on, and remember, this is currently under litigation, so that's what's complicating the matter.
It may be complicating the matter, but people still need the ambulances, people will still be getting the bills.
The process will still work, the process will still work, it's just.
But you don't have the, I mean, so you're retroactively going to do it? Like, if people submit their bills, you're gonna retroactively approve it?
Once their bill is paid, and they have proof that the bill is paid, yes.
All right.
When the ordinance is in place, if that's what's required, that's what will be done.
But that needs to be done, because you can't spend money without it being, you know, a resolution, an ordinance, something. You cannot spend any money without that, and to, you know, I understand the process.
Mr. Tros just said the ordinance is in process, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Joe Beretto, Poplar Avenue. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Council. Three quick things, one is, the trucks that we're leasing for sanitation, they're working properly, they're fine?
We will also have those evaluated to see if what was represented is true.
Okay, so the leasing, so the leasing arrangement?
While I have the specialized mechanic here, he will also be looking at those vehicles.
Okay. And the other thing is, about six weeks ago, I came up and asked about the speeding sign to be put into the school zone. I noticed, right about when school finished, the sign was placed on Fairmont, one block before Summit, as you're approaching the stop sign. That seems to be just a ridiculous place to put a speeding sign when you're gonna stop at the stop sign, because there's nowhere else to go.
Can you give me the location again?
It's right on Fairmont Ave and Summit, a block before Summit.
And where did you, where did you want the sign to be?
Going towards the school, so if you're coming off of Summit, on either Fairmont or on Poplar, where we are, so that you can kind of put it in the middle, so that you could slow down, because the kids are coming up a few, it gives people time. But it's been there for the last six weeks, and it's before a stop sign, I just think it's a real poor placement.
You know about the stop sign? They.
No, it's before.
You talk about the sign, it's in Feminine Avenue, it's in Crown, between Crown and.
So it's a block before Summit. What I'm saying is, you're not speeding, it's, you have to stop.
You want it closer to Fairmont.
The other way, right, because, and you need it closer, with enough anticipation, so people going towards the school.
Right.
Can stop.
Okay.
Up there, you know, that's what I'm saying, it's been there for six weeks, and I don't, I just thought I'd.
I am very glad you're here. We have the officer in charge, Captain Lloyd here, and I see him probably texting the traffic division as we speak.
He will change it.
No, that's fine, I just want a better use of it, because I saw it there, and I think it's just.
No, got to use it the two-way, you know why? Because when the officer was there, before we put a sign there, he catch an average about maybe 15 people in less than one hour, making over 45 and 50. Because they go all the way from Grand Avenue, all the way up to Summit.
And they gun it down Poplar.
And they go in that area, and they do that on the way back, especially in the morning.
So fair enough, I just wanted that, you know, for the school year coming.
Joe, I think we see a lot of people nodding. We'll have the traffic division look at it and make the decision.
I said that from the beginning, but.
We are still looking into speed humps, they do have their problems, and I know.
Well, the people are afraid of the.
The councilman has recommended that, and we are still looking into that.
They got a lot of.
Because when you have that many speeders, then the problem will come is, you know, were they properly warned? And then they bottom out their car, because if you go over a speed hump doing 45 miles an hour, that becomes a huge problem.
The thing is, is that, like, I'm on the corner of Poplar and Pine, and when they have the wooden barriers there, people speed through and gun around them regardless. So if we could put one there, it would be great, because it's at the school block. I'm just one, I worry about the kids coming in, and the ones that come home alone. My other thing is, and I asked this over a year ago, River Road is a disaster in terms of potholes, in terms of how poorly they were fixed, the holes that were there. Over a year ago, there was work done, like, from where Pet Boys is to past Toyota of Hackensack.
That's a county road.
And, but they said it was supposed to be fixed when the weather got warmer, that hasn't happened, or worse. Which leads me to the last thing. With all the work that's being done, if you try to get through Main, State, Union, you're dead to rights during the day. There's no warning either, so you're stuck. It took me 20 minutes to get through literally one block, right in front of the white man to get through that street. manor to get through that street.
Did you talk to Jason Nunamaker? Because he got in the same, and I don't mean to laugh, but this is a common occurrence, unfortunately with everybody.
My concern is just that, is there a way?
I'm hoping you're listening, Joe.
I am, I am. I, I listen to you. We, we do try to send out alerts and on the website.
Are you signed up for the NICSIL alerts?
Yeah.
All right, then we have to.
I'm going to check into that.
We have to check if there's a problem, that they're not going out properly. Jason reported this at the COW meeting as well.
Even the signage, but I mean, even signage in advance of, not when you're just right there. We need to have some sort of, or, as I sorted last week, right on Grand, as you get to the school, with a timeframe, from this time to this time.
That's the paving project.
You know, but, but that's what we need to also know, if there's work being done. I mean, it's just, people get stuck there, and if you're on your lunch break, or if you're running to a meeting, and you think you have enough time, because with this big, you're stuck there, so that's all.
The, the issues are with, unfortunately, with PSCNG, and they are constantly, they're in motion all over the city.
That's what happens.
I mean, they fix it, they break it, they fix it, they break it, and, and it's always the same intersections and all.
You got gas, you got water, you got the sewers. It's everybody doing it at the same time.
I just want to, you know, just so it's, it's better for everybody.
I understand, I understand your frustration, because I've gotten caught as well.
It's brutal.
It's brutal.
Thank you.
And they don't care that the city manager is late.
And one or two months, you're going to be okay.
Progress is painful, unfortunately, sometimes. Thank you.
Good evening, Kathleen Salvo. They're, they're both right, because what happens is.
They are.
But everybody's right, but the whole town is a mess, because the alternate routes are also being done. So usually, when you do a route, you have an alternate route to go, but so when the regular route and the alternate route are both being messed up, there's no place to go, and it's very frustrating. The $16,000 grant you got for safety, what does that mean? What, what kind of safety grant was that?
I'd have to go back.
Okay.
To be honest with you, I am.
Can we stop the clock, so I can, yeah. Is that on tonight, Kathy?
Yeah, that was on the.
Yeah, I heard it fast, and it, he didn't elaborate, he just gave a dollar value.
Because I would have to check, and if you want, I can, you can call me tomorrow, and I will.
All right, because there are a lot of safety concerns. The speed bumps are being used. Lynn Hurst has them by their high school. They have them on the entire block, so people can't pick up momentum, because the, the time they pick up momentum, they hit another speed bump, so there's no way they're going to bottom out their car. Garfield has them by their high school, the entire block. My friend was a coursing guard by Fairmount, and she's a, was a big lady. She must got killed. The, the car literally wanted to run her over. They're, they're crazy, very aggressive, as are a lot of Hackensack drivers or people who come to Hackensack. The new cultural arts center that I came to the opening, lots of trees, way too many trees, very pretty, a lot of, a lot of stuff going on. And again, our parks department is not, can't, would not, never be able to maintain it, because there's way too many, too much vegetation with deciduous trees. A safety problem that I, that I saw when I walked around the building, Warren Street used to have a left-turn lane. It always had it, and now I see four parking spaces where the left-turn lane is. If you proceed, if you're going south on State Street, once you go over the track, you have a left turn for Mercer, you have a left turn for Lanting, a left turn for Warren. Everybody feeds left, so that the traffic can continue to proceed without any interference. Eliminating that left turn is going to be a problem, because it's not worth the four spaces that you're sacrificing to, to eliminate that turn. Because as they proceed south, you want them to keep away from that lane, because now you have this big apartment complex that people are going to be queuing in to use the parking garage, and you don't want them to be able to, that they're going to have to merge away from these cars. They're going to go behind the cars, thinking they should be moving, and they're not. So I don't know who gave that up, had that happened, but that, that should not have happened. That needs to be looked, looked into. The garbage trucks, the evaluation, do we evaluate them after we get them? Shouldn't you evaluate them before you sign the lease? How, how much?
They were, they were evaluated.
Before the lease signing?
Yes, they were.
And they got bad right after they signed the lease? They self-destructed after the lease was signed? How did that work?
We're, we're doing it as a precautionary measure, since we already have the mechanic on site. We're going to actually look at as many trucks as we possibly can, including the plow trucks, so that.
Well, we better start looking on those quickly.
So we know what we're doing with that as well.
Okay, because, um.
The best, the best thing for, for this council will have an independent study by an expert that they specialize in repairing the state vehicles.
And again, the head of sanitation should really have had an integral part in evaluating these things, because they're the people who.
The head of sanitation is not a mechanic.
Oh, yeah, oh, but that's part of the job. When, he should, I mean, that's part of the job.
There is a.
I'm not a mechanic, but I know where a bad truck went and see one.
There is a mechanics division with the mechanics department.
But the head of sanitation gives the order to fix the trucks, to make sure they're, they're in tip-top shape every day. This is, this is continuous maintenance. This doesn't, these things don't get bad overnight. And we inherit, you know you inherited this problem two years ago when you came in. The truck, the trucks were bad then. So they didn't get better, they got worse.
I inherited it 10 months ago.
All right, you inherited, you inherited everything, so that's your, that's your problem. But we inherited a big mess, and we have to do something about it.
I thought inheritance was supposed to be good.
No, not, not in Hackensack. No, not in Hackensack. You got a lot, you know.
Hey Kathy, I do have an answer for you on that, on that grant.
Okay, thank you.
The funding program or sources, New Jersey Division of Highway Traffic Safety, Pedestrian Safety Enforcement Fund.
Oh, yes.
Okay? The purpose of the funding is for the police department to conduct additional pedestrian safety enforcement and education activities. The award is $16,000. We requested 16,000, and the award of the, the award date is June 24, 2015.
Can I get, can I be put in? My friend Ruth almost got killed going to ShopRite the other day, because she had a walk, she was forced to walk into the street again on Moonaki Road, because people were parking on the right-of-way. And this happened, it has to be no parking at any time, but the gas station and the person next to Wawa who heaps the trucks, and it forces the people to walk into traffic lanes. So we're really jeopardizing our pedestrians on those two locations, and we need to do something about it. I talked to the building department, they say it's traffic. I talked to traffic, they say it's building. It's like a whole group of people watching kids in the backyard, adults being in the backyard, and kids are drowning. Because everybody thinks everybody else is watching the kids, and nobody's watching us, because nobody wants to take it upon themselves. So I need this to be addressed right away, because somebody's going to get killed. We have pedestrians.
And this, and this location is on Moonaki.
Moonaki, where the gas station is, where somebody parks a car, forces the pedestrians to walk out into the street, because they have to navigate around the car that shouldn't be there, and they, and Ruth almost got creamed, because her car was making a right turn. And a good thing she was slow in, in doing it, she would have gotten killed. And the same.
If it's in, if it's in the right-of-way, it is, it is the police department. If it's on the property of the owner, then, and then it's, I would say code enforcement.
It's the police department, but what we should do is, we should designate a 48 inches, make them do it with striping, like we do by Ever Ready, so that everybody knows that that, that's sacred, that that's for the pedestrians.
If we can do something about it, I will check with the police department.
We need to do something right away, because we're going to have a bad accident on the 16.
Kathy, Kathy, I'm sorry about your time, stop.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else from the public? Seeing, seeing none, can I have a motion to close?
Offer. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Soh.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrusso. Okay, anyone from the council would like to speak?
Well, all the time they continue pounding about the business that our Leo Soccer Facility or whatever, you know, a city will design new recreation facility for the kids. I don't play anymore, so the facility is not for me, for the kids. And for instance, last night, the Royals of Hackensack got reworked, because they are in good standings in the league. The discipline that they got, they got invited to participate in the ceremony in Giant Stadium, in front of 75,000 people, okay? No matter where I go, I see state troopers, Hackensack police officers. I went to see, for instance, a show, and one of the kids that used to be working, playing for us, with one of the managers of the theater. So what we are doing with the sports, like your daughter does, okay, is to try to get the kids involved in sports, and that way, they can be away from problems, or drugs, or whatever. So if something is wrong with that, it's okay. You can say whatever you want to say. The problem with the trucks is true. We have problems with the trucks, because Lousi maintained the program for the last few years, okay? Even the mechanic should be evaluated, not only the trucks, okay? So if something wrong with that, the street sweepers. When we were looking into the street sweepers right away, oh, we have to buy new ones. Guess what? The street sweeper, they are running, but I called a person from the outside to evaluate the street sweepers. Now, the street sweeper, they are running, and we don't have to spend that quarter million dollar, okay? And the same thing is going to happen with the trucks. So be patient, it's going to take maybe two weeks, and we're going to know what are we going to do with the trucks. But there's no reason to go and spend the money, and you buy new trucks and new trucks and new street sweepers or whatever. That don't going to happen, okay? So thank you for coming.
I want to thank Mr. Nunamaka and Mr. Stein for helping us get the pool for the citizens. Really appreciate it. Tomorrow, SmoL is going to be performing on the green. Hope we see all, everyone out there. It's going to be hot, so bring water, plenty of fluids, and thanks for coming out.
Other than pig, piggybacking off of what they said, thank you guys for reaching out, doing the right thing, helping us out. Also, I want to congratulate Mr. Dim for being appointed to the planning board. What was his points?[1583.12]